All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Today is May 6th. It's past 1 o'clock at this point, and we are in the Land Use Committee. This is a public hearing. Please remember to mute yourself whenever you are not speaking. In attendance, I just saw the Council President. We have the Chair at Risinger, Mary Pat Clark, Councilwoman of 14th District, Eric Castello of the 11th District, Ryan Dorsey of the 3rd District, Leon Pickett of the 7th District, and Sharon Green Middleton of the 6th District, all on the line, and we are all a part of this committee. Then from, I know, I think I saw Matt Segman from the Administration, and I think Alina Di Petrio from the Law Department. And I think I had everybody. I think I did. And so the first bill, 20-0482. Oh, I'm sorry. And Councilmen Stone, sorry, I didn't see you. And so the first bill that we're hearing is City Council Bill 20-0482. It's the Inclusionary Housing Requirement Sunset Extension. The purpose of... Can everybody mute their phones? For the purpose of extending the automatic termination of Ordinate 07-474, Inclusionary Housing Providing for a Special Effective Date in Generally Relating to the Promotion of Affordable Residential Units. Public Notice Requirements Have Been Met. Chair Recognizes Department of Housing and Community Development at this time.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Stephanie Murdock here, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm joined by our Chief of Operations, Jay Green, as well as Senior Advisor to the COO, Stacy Freed, as well as Bob Pipick of the Office of Policy and Partnership. Jay is going to give a brief summary of the bill.
That we would like, that's going to sunset at the end of June. We're proposing that it is extended for two years. In that time, we will work to hire a consultant to help us advise on ways to make the bill more effective during that two-year period and to help us develop regulations for the bill that will, you know, take into account some of the issues that we've been dealing with. But we believe in talking with our stakeholders, both advocates and the real estate development community, that the best course of action here is to extend the bill for two years as we seek to make improvements to it and have further discussions around the issues of inclusionary housing.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions for Jay?
Yes. I'm Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. Jay, what's been done lately to study this matter?
Well, we've had, internally, the department, we have reviewed the bill. And as I had mentioned before, part of our discussion is to, we intend to post for a consultant to actually help us in analyzing the bill. But internally, we have reviewed it extensively. And so that's where we are at this point in time.
Are there any reports on the internal review?
We haven't produced any reports, to my knowledge. You know, we've discussions about what we've kind of come across in our research, but we haven't produced any formal reports based on those internal discussions.
Why is it important to review the law? To hire a consultant and to come up with, you know, suggestions and proposals or how the existing law might be changed?
Well, from my reading of the law, it's a very complicated law with a lot of moving parts with formulas.
Steph, excuse me. Stephanie, can you mute yourself? I think you're moving around and making some noise here. Sorry, Jay.
I'm sorry, but I got distracted. What was your question again, Councilmember?
Why is it important to study this law and create revisions to it?
Yeah, it's a very complex law with a lot of moving parts to it. And so, you know, we think we need, and we're pretty certain that we need further, you know, assistance and trying to make it more effective. And that's the goal here, is to take what we have, the current law, and make it more effective going forward. But it is a very complicated law with very complicated formulas. And those are some of the things that we have reviewed to try to make this law as effective as possible in its current form.
What's ineffective about it in its current form?
Well, I think we would like to see more units, affordable housing units produced as a result of the law.
Can you give us a sense of just how ineffective it is?
Well, to date, we've produced 36 affordable housing units under this law.
Over what period of time? 10 years?
I think it was originally passed 2007, the original law.
13 years.
But currently, and as we've reviewed it, we are in a position to approve six additional, hopefully, six additional affordable units. And as we've taken a harder look at interpreting this law and applying this law. So we've had 36 in the past, but right now, in the last number of months and the last couple of projects has come through, the way we've applied it and interpreted it, we anticipate that we'll produce an additional six units, like I said, in the last couple of months of our review that we've had.
Do we have any estimate as to how many housing units total have been approved for construction or being created in this time where we're approving these six additional units?
I don't have the total number of units that have been applied for.
No, I mean, I mean, how many houses, how many units of housing are being created in the city? At a time when this, when this law is resulting in the creation of a total of six units, hopefully, right? You said, perhaps you could elaborate. You said you're like in the process of approving, hopefully, six units. I'm not sure whether, how it works exactly.
Yeah, every housing development is not bound by the inclusionary housing law. It's if you're receiving certain benefits from the city, then the law applies to you, but it doesn't apply to every unit that's being developed. So that's a distinction that's very important. Not every unit that's being built has to comply with this law.
Yeah, so it sounds to me like the, and we, that's been a basic criticism or a basic point of understanding about this law for as long as it has existed. We've had 13 years to try to improve this law, and we're being essentially asked for there to be an additional two years under what we have known for essentially, for more than a decade, was, you know, negligibly effective in doing anything of what its title would indicate it's intended to do.
Councilman, this is Matt Segman from the Mayor's Office. I just want to clarify what the intent of the bill before the council today is. I think your, what you're getting at is very, your points are very well taken. The background behind this bill, I know that the folks at DHCD have been very deliberate and very thoughtful in ways to improve the law. The purpose of this bill is not to make those improvements, it's to make sure that the existing law does not expire while that process is ongoing. So it is a request for a two-year extension. It is possible that the department, possible, and I would say likely, that the department will be coming back to the council prior to then, you know, asking for, you know, for improvements to make this law stronger and more robust. So again, this is just a simple request to extend the existing law so it does not expire while the process is ongoing of evaluating how to make it stronger and more effective.
So I'm just going to cut in here. This is Councilwoman Shannon Snead. Do we know, have we been documenting what the barriers are and so we know what ways they need to be improved? Is there somewhere in housing where it's written down that this is some of the obstacles we've fallen into? Whether it be five items on that list or whether it's two items on the list? Do we have anything documented that we can see where the barriers are? And so if it's something that the council needs to do to make it better or stronger or remove the barriers, do we have it?
Again, Councilmember, this is why we want to hire a consultant to work with us on coming up with those definitive points that we can present and that everybody can look at and move from there.
But I mean, without even having a consultant? So we don't have a list of what has worked and what hasn't worked thus far with the folks that have been working on it inside housing? I mean, I know we have gripes, or we know offhand what things don't work and what things do, but is there an actual list that we can go from?
We can try to put together, we can put together a list for you of what we think are some of the major points that probably need to be addressed. One of them is that there were formulas that were articulated some time ago or amounts that the Housing Department can contribute towards affordable housing. And those amounts are, we believe, are outdated and very low. And makes it very difficult to produce more units. So those are some of the issues that we would have to review and make recommendations going forward of how to improve, make improvements to the law.
Can I, how do I raise my hand?
We see, you can go ahead.
Oh, okay. Are you, am I recognized, Madam?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman. No one else had their hand up.
Thank you. I just want to say that I was around, of course, when the world was flat, but I was also around when this was put together, this law. And I know that something happened, and Mr. Commissioner Green, you were not here then, but it was a very active, it was very active with people that cared about affordable housing, working with the city to put something together. Kind of at the last minute, after the advocates thought they had a bill, a lot of things changed that were major. And one of them was that the development, one of them was that the city paid the difference. In other words, that, excuse me, my husband's calling to me because he has no idea I'm doing this. Joe, I'm busy. I'll get it later. So basically, one of the problems is that, that, excuse me, can you just pull? Hey, Joe, I'm at a hearing. I'm sorry. I'm working from home. Give me credit. So we all are. So basically, that changed. That was one of the things that changed at the last minute. And it's a burden on the Housing Department because they're the ones who make up the difference, a portion of the difference for a developer. And the idea was if developers are getting certain benefits, like a TIF or whatever, then, and they want to develop, they should work it out financially themselves to put in the affordable units that are required. So my feeling is, this is a whole new crop of people here at housing. Very impressed, I'm very pleased with the way the Housing Department is working with the council. But I would not like to see this extended for two years because there's a whole new crop of people coming in. I know I'm getting out of the way to let them in. They probably would have come anyway. But that they may have different ideas. They may be able to help us figure out how to save the money and make Baltimore a place where developers are willing to absorb the cost for the trade-off of benefits and the right to develop with benefits. So I'm not saying anything about the current people and how hard everybody works over there. But you inherited something that just isn't, was not intended and slows everything down because it all comes down to how much money does housing have to be able to afford to subsidize? And so that's a subsidy on a subsidy, a development. And that shouldn't be what happens. And so I think that's what needs to be examined as we go forward. I mean, I would be glad to vote for what housing needs to keep it alive till the next term of office comes in. But I think it's got to be, we got to start from scratch and have a group of people that are willing to work real hard with housing to get something together that is more practical. And maybe we won't get as many affordable units, but we got 42, so we probably can't fall off that floor. Let's try that. Let's look at that and let the new council, with this current administration in housing, work it out, test it out, and just tough it out. Thanks.
Jay, how long until you guys have someone? Have you guys been interviewing people to get a person in to go through all of this? So Jay, how long will it?
We intend to post for the RFP, like within the next week or so. And so the consultant should be on board very, very shortly. Again, we want to emphasize that we believe that it's in the best interest of the city to keep this law intact and improve on it while we kind of analyze it and comes back to the council with, you know, a comprehensive set of ideas of how we move forward. We do think we can make improvements in how it's applied and how it's analyzed under the current law. And we do think we can come back, as you suggested, Madam Chair, with points of how we can make improvements going forward. But, and then again, in talking with our stakeholders, we do think it's very, very important that we keep this law in play now while we go through this process.
Madam Chair.
Can I hold you for one question, one moment, Councilman Dorsey?
Yes, ma'am.
Stephanie Murdock, I've had her hand up for a while. Stephanie?
Hi, yes. Good morning, everybody. I just wanted to circle back on a few points that were made earlier by some of my colleagues. As Matt Segman said from the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, this bill is simply an extension of the existing legislation so that we can hire a consultant to figure out why this isn't working as effectively as it should be. We all know that this is not working as effectively as it should be. We have the support of not only the development community, but also the Inclusionary Housing Board to bring on a consultant to help us figure out why we're not producing as many units as we should. If we don't extend this bill, it goes away. So while I agree with Councilwoman Clark, there are going to be a new crop of council members coming in, but if the law is gone, we don't have the chance to figure out why it's not working. So that's why we're asking for this extension. I'd also add that the, some of the reasons that we need to go back and look at that is, you know, the climate has changed. We have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund now. The housing market has changed dramatically over the last decade. We have met extensively with Councilman Henry in the past. He's not a member of this committee, but he had previously proposed legislation to improve the legislation. It did not pass the council, but we went through his entire bill line by line to see if some of his recommendations could be made. But unfortunately, so much has changed in the past decade that it just isn't feasible for us to go backwards. We need to bring in a private consultant to help us figure out how to make this bill work.
Thank you, Stephanie. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I have a bit of a fundamental disagreement with DHCD here in that it's the role of the City Council to make these changes. It's the role of the City Council to propose and pass laws. I mean, DHCD can do that as well, but at the end of the day, it seems like this law is just utterly ineffective, almost to the point of being just completely pointless, having it on the books at all. And I think that the City Council should feel a mandate and pressure to be leaders on this issue in creating the law that the city needs in order to actually effectively produce an effective law and that it would be a deferring or abdication of the City Council's responsibility to do that, to hand it off to a consultant at this point and just trust that somebody who was not elected to represent the needs of this city, as the City Council has been, to just hand it off to that unknown person to come up with some recommendations. The City Council can be ambitious about this, and the City Council can have some guts about this. And we can put some things on the table. And I think that with a term coming, starting, you know, in barely six months, you know, less than a year having a new City Council, there should be a sense of a mandate for that new council to take this utterly seriously, not wait, you know, potentially another year and a half after the commencement of the next term. And so it doesn't really make sense to me to extend this for two years. At the very most, we should be extending this for six months, but without any of the parameters, as Councilwoman Snead pointed out, she asked the question, you know, does the Housing Department have any documentation of the kind of parameters that need to be changed? Is what evaluation has been done? What guidance exists so far that we can ask, that we can even hand over to a consultant to evaluate and to build upon? You know, you can hire, you can hire a consultant to do anything, but you're a whole lot better off if you have some guidance to hand them. If the Housing Department doesn't have any guidance at this point to offer for how this consultant should be directed to work after all of these years, then I think that there should be some pressure on the Housing Department to produce that guidance before being granted anything like two years. I would, you know, I would say that it's my, it's my position that this bill should not be moved forward today, that we should ask that the Housing Department come back to us in a week and provide us guidance on what it would ask a consultant to do and consider whether we should extend this for six months so that they have a mandate to produce some results before the end of this term in order to be able to deliver a set of recommendations to the new council president and the new council at the commencement, not halfway through the next term. Thank you for that time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman, I just wanted to add that DHCD does put out annual reports that are delivered to the council every year about the results of the Inclusionary Housing Program. I certainly understand your concerns, and I believe that we would certainly be able to share our requests for proposals. I think six months is a little short-sighted. It takes quite a while to put out an RFP, receive the bids, decide on a consultant, and I am concerned that six months would not be enough time for that. I mean, as you see, for instance, this morning in Board of Estimates meetings, how long it actually takes to get a contract through. So I don't think that two years is being overly ambitious. And like I said previously, if we do not extend this program, it doesn't expire on June 30th of this year.
Thank you, Stephanie. Let's, Madam Chair, before anyone speaks, let's be recognized. Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton had her hand up as well, and I just want to get her in.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I was listening to Councilwoman Clark, really all of you, and just kind of want to let you know, I was part of the advocacy before I became a councilperson and kind of remember the whole flow of inclusionary housing. That was then really a strong push through, you know, it included the advocacy for lead paint poisoning and just all of those different things. And the point that Stephanie keeps mentioning is that we don't do this, it's all going to be lost. All of you raised some wonderful points that the council should be involved in this. But this, in my eyes, is just another added tool and a piece that will help with all those advocacy pieces that are needed and all the things that are wrong with housing. And, you know, Councilman Dorsey raised some good points. I think that Mr. Green has gotten the message that we should, as councilmembers, be included also in that process along with whoever the consultant is going to be. But I think we should not let this bill just drop. It is a very important piece in improving our housing, and it's connected with all the new things that have come to play. So I just think that we should, and I think, and I know that in the past, housing did take time and come to each council member or on the committees to go through it. But because of this pandemic and some of these things, I'm thinking that they, you know, didn't really have that opportunity to really go through the explanations like they used to do in the past. And, you know, that's how And, you know, that's happening with a number of things that we're doing now through these virtual hearings. So that's just my piece. Thanks.
I'm going to go to Matt Stagman now, his hand was up as well.
Councilwoman? Oh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I, I actually was going to raise a number of, I think, the same points as Councilwoman Middleton. Just, you know, again, wanted to reiterate, this legislation that's before you today is in no way, you know, the final word on the issue of inclusionary housing in the city of Baltimore. It is really, you know, a more of a procedural change than anything just to make sure that we're not letting the existing law expire before, before something new and better can, can be put in place. You know, I, I think that it would be a shame to, you know, to, to truly be starting from square one rather than, you know, building on and improving the, the existing law. So I appreciate the comments from Councilwoman Middleton and appreciate the time at the committee today.
Thank you, Matt. I'm going to go to Councilman Eric Cello because he had his hand up as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to echo and repeat Councilwoman Middleton's comments. She characterized it perfectly. Thank you.
Am I missing anyone? Does anyone else want to speak? Any of the council members, committee members?
This is Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate my point that, you know, as Councilwoman Middleton said, this is an important tool. I think that we do have some important tools, but it would seem to me that this is, this is like having a hammer without a head. It's just a stick that you wave around that's not good for anything. It's, it's not producing anything. And my point here is that if this, if this law were to, to sunset, there would be essentially no noticeable difference from having it on the books right now. It's not producing affordable housing and it's not making people think that they have any requirement to produce affordable housing. And that, to me, is an utterly ineffective and meaningless law. And I don't think that we can tolerate having two more years of this before we have, you know, any, any assurance of a proposal that, that COVID-19 and the number of homeless people that we are currently trying to house in hotels and the spread of this disease in our shelters and the number of people who are challenged right now, being able to pay their bills, is not new. It's only, it, it's only accentuating the understanding that we have had for a very long time, that we're desperate, that we have an urgent need for affordable housing. And yes, now we have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the board that goes along with that and funding in the fund. But this law in and of itself is independent of all of that and, and needs to be effective on its own. And it is not effective on its own. And so nothing would be lost by letting it, you know, sunset, in my mind. You know, when we talk about starting from scratch, let's be clear that the text of this law still exists as something that we can use as a frame of reference. But I would, you know, again, I, I think that, that two years is too long and that six months seems reasonable in a lot of ways. And that if this is not something that, you know, that I, I think that perhaps this bill should be waited on and, and not be voted here today, that there should be some further discussion about it. I don't think that I'm missing anything here from having not had somebody from the Housing Department come to me because of the inconvenience of COVID-19. I don't think that I've merely just not had a meeting to better inform me. I think that there are some unresolved concerns here and that I think warrants some further discussion. And I would ask that this bill not be voted today.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm going to go to Mr. Jay Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to get back to a point I made earlier that the department, we have done a review. We can share our review with you. We do think we can make some changes about administratively, how this is applied, when the developer, development community, you know, is aware of the law and has to comply with the law and work with planning. I think we haven't done that in the past and we think that's a, a major point that we can include under the current law that would improve the law. So, and, and, and we've taken a, a review and undertaken a review and we believe that we can give our consultant, point them in the right direction to get really some results, good results out of this current law while we work to, for, you know, longer term improvements. But we can, glad to share that with you and other members of the council. But we, we have taken a hard look at this law internally.
All right, there's, oh, Councilwoman Green Middleton.
Jay, I, again, I know you were handed this and I remember many of the problems were all focused around money and how to do this. And I remember doing the present, when the Commissioner, Michael Braverman, did his presentation before the last budget and had dialogue with the council, mentioning that, talking about inclusionary housing and mentioning that, you know, money has always been an issue. And I also remember him saying that this is one piece, since he has been Commissioner, has wrapped his arms around and is really going to press and make changes and be a part. And I, and I, I remember just a long conversation about all of that. So I just want the committee just to keep that in the back of their mind as well. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, any, Chairman Ed Reisinger.
Yes. Madam Vice Chair, I had some technical difficulties and I just got back on. Is there amendment to this? I know you had people testifying. Is there amendment yet or are we still testifying?
We were still in question, more with the council members going back and forth. We have not reached a point for public testimony as of yet and we did not have any amendment for this. But to be honest with you, what we're thinking is that we should come back to the table and have like a working session to get more questions and answers out of anything, maybe hold off on voting this today. We do have a couple of more council meetings before June 30th hits and I think that would be acceptable. But this is not my committee. I'm not the chairperson, so I hate to put the pressure on you, but I guess that's what I'm thinking since it's so many.
Okay. I got it. Thank you.
May I speak?
Councilwoman, sure.
I, I just want to update the chairman. I'm usually the ones with technical difficulties getting here. I, I would like to see, I mean, I've heard the discussion and I don't know, maybe split the difference. I like the idea of not voting today and having a chance to work with housing somewhat and coming back and deciding. But I would definitely think a year should be enough. Six takes us to the next, I think it takes us to the end of this term, but it still gives the new council a chance to get used to things, work with housing, rusher to work with housing and to come up with solutions. And basically, the way this is, I mean, to go back through the same pattern of putting the bill, law together is a mistake in itself because that's how we got to where we are now. When the community was fully involved, it, it, almost overnight, that bill, as it traveled to the council, got bureaucratized and we never recovered from that. And really, very few people involved intensively with the bill knew what happened. And so I wouldn't want to see that happen again. I think a year would be enough when the day comes for a motion. But I hope in the meantime, we might take a break on it, intensively meet and review things and get the affordable housing people into that conversation because they have their own theories of how to spend affordable money and we don't need to be trying to build, we really don't need to put people in the expensive developments. I, I, you know, we, we can, maybe we would like in normal kind of apartment developments or condo developments, not the most expensive where they, where, where they've got more than they need and we are spending too much money when we can do just as well with more medium, moderate and low income. So in other words, I hope we can take a pause here. We have time and I hope, might consider a year. But that's, if, if you're voting today, I'm not voting against my housing colleagues that have been so good to us, but I think it would be, I, I don't think it's, we're ready to cook this.
Madam Chair.
I saw two hands up. I saw Ryan, Councilman Ryan Dorsey's hand up first and then Councilman Cello. I'll come to you after Ryan.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, could you go to Councilman Cello first? Can I yield my, yield to him first?
You, you got it. Councilman Cello, you ready? We can't hear you. Can you guys hear him? I can't.
No.
Councilman, you might need to call in if you hit the three dots, hit the audio connection and then put your phone number in and it'll call your phone.
Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Cello wants me to go to you.
I'd like to make a motion to recess on this bill for today in order to give the council president's office and myself and others some time to talk with the Housing Department about setting some expectations about what might happen during the period of an extension here. I'm not entirely opposed to the suggestion from Councilwoman Clark of a year, but if we were going to extend for a year, I would think that we should have some benchmarks and expectations set for the first six months and into the nine month mark and then up to the 12 month mark. I'd like to make that motion, but I'd like to yield to Councilman Cello first.
Councilman Cello, were you saying, putting your hand up? You second that?
No, no, no. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I, I will be brief. I understand the, the points on all sides and I appreciate what Councilman Dorsey is trying to accomplish here. That said, I am fully supportive of moving forward for what housing wants to do. I think we can still accomplish what Councilman Dorsey would like to accomplish in the near future and get a commitment from housing that they're going to work with us on that and do everything we can to try and improve upon this. And I, I will just leave you, and, and I don't mean to crack wise here, I will leave you with something that Confucius said, "It is better to have a diamond with a flaw in it than to have a pebble without one." I yield my time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton, I see your hand up.
I just want to do a second to what Councilman Cello had suggested. I don't have a problem with the year as well. But I definitely don't think six months is enough time.
May I be heard?
The, the Council, Councilman Ryan Dorsey had his hand up. Councilwoman, can we go to, he had his hand up first. Councilman Dorsey, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to recess this bill for one week in order to have some further discussion and come up with some understanding. You know, I, I'd like to have some understanding of expectations before we vote on this. Right now, there are no, there, there, I, I think that the expectations are too, too vague. And so I'm putting a motion on the floor to, to, to recess this bill for one week.
I'd like to.
Madam Chair, point of order, this is Councilman Cello, point of order.
Go ahead, Councilman Cello.
Thank you for recognizing me, Madam Chair. So there was already a motion on the floor, the previous motion that Councilman Dorsey made. And now there's.
I'm still seconding that first motion.
Well, hang, hang on. There's, there was a motion that was made and then Councilman Dorsey had made a different motion. So something needs to either happen with the first motion or it needs to be pulled back in favor of the second motion.
Madam, may I say?
Hold on for one moment, Councilwoman. I'm going to yield to Councilman Dorsey to see what he wants to do first since they both were his, his motion.
I, I'm sorry. I believe I did not fully make the first motion. I think it was a general request to recess. And so I, I'd like to make a motion. I, I'd like to withdraw my second motion and refer to my first motion that we recess on this bill at the moment.
Go ahead, Count. Council, Councilwoman, I don't think we've heard.
Oh, you don't hear?
Now we do. Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay. I'm seconding that motion, but I have a sense that we have a consensus. I'm not sure we need to compete with each other about that motion that we, that, that my colleague has suggested something which has some kind of, which has a lot of merit and is not opposed violently by anyone I've heard from that at least, and I don't think we should say a week because the chair and vice chair of this committee, they, they don't have their schedules in front of them and they're harder to schedule, things are harder to schedule than they usually are. But I think you mean, you mean this month, perhaps, that, not in a week because it might not be available, but.
The motion is to recess, just without a time limit.
Second the motion.
Okay, thank you. But we still, I just want to make sure everyone realizes that we still need to get through the agency reports, which I'm going to go through now.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yes. So the motion is on the floor, but we're going to go to agency report.
Point of order.
Yes.
We'll withdraw the motion until we've heard agency reports.
Thank you. Perfect.
I withdraw my second. While we're saying that that will take priority as a motion when everything is ready.
Thank you. Perfect. Okay, let's go to agency reports. Let's start with the Planning Commission.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair and members of the committee. The Planning Commission heard this bill on February 20th and recommends favor.
Thank you. And I'm going to go to DHCD.
Hi, DHCD, Stephanie Murdock, legislative liaison for the department. I just wanted to add a few things to the conversation. So this bill was previously, the hearing was previously canceled due to COVID. We were supposed to hear this bill last month. When we introduced this bill, we did come to the city council and offer meetings to all council members, committee members. We've met with the mayor's office, the president's office on this. I, I just want to reiterate, we agree, this is not working as well as it should be, but we have been in conversation. But we have been in conversation with not only the advocates, but also the development committee, uh, development community that agree that a, a two-year extension isn't the appropriate amount of time to look at the details of this program. As Jay said earlier, we're happy to share, again, the annual reports that, that we've been sending out about the existing program. Um, but as Matt said previously, this legislation does not go into the actual details and the formulas of the existing program. This is merely an extension so we can preserve the legislation while we bring on a consultant. We plan on involving the council in the Steering Committee that helps us review the consultants' reports and, um, we're certainly happy to share information with you guys.
Stephanie, sorry to cut you off, just really quickly. We're, we're getting ready to get knocked off of Charm TV at 2:00 PM. So I just want to let the people who are viewing on Charm TV know that this hearing will continue to be recorded and, uh, will be posted online, uh, at charmtvbaltimore.com and on YouTube at the Charm TV Hub, uh, after, uh, the conclusion of the hearing and some processing time. Thank you.
Department of Finance.
Madam Chair, we defer, um, we don't oppose the legislation. Um, uh, we defer to DHCD and, and in terms of fiscal impact specifically, uh, we're hoping that, eh, hiring the consultant will be funded through existing resources. There's no additional burden to the city. Um, we, we would like to participate in this evaluation actively with the consultant, with DHCD, just to make sure that whatever comes with that report or any recommendation is sustainable, physically sustainable for the city.
Thank you, um, and now from the.
I, I have a question. I have a question.
Sure, can we come right back and just let the city solicitors sort of say whether it's their favorable or not?
Sure, whatever.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Elena DePietro from the Law Department. Law Department, um, can approve the bill for formal legal sufficiency.
Perfect, thank you. Um, Councilwoman Clark.
Oh, I just wanted to ask Finance, uh, what its, uh, fiscal impact number is for the, um, for the two-year extension that it is, that the, uh, that housing's proposing. How much money will that cost housing?
Um, I cannot provide an answer to that question, uh, Councilwoman. Um, I have to get back to, to the ACD and internally to, to, to estimate that. Um, initially, without, um, going to detail of how the program's gonna work, I believe the, the first step is hiring this consultant and that consultant making recommendations. Based on that is the proposal for changes to the law. At this point, it's hard to tell what the additional cost's gonna be.
But Madam Chair, could I ask if, um, when we come back, if we, if we do recess and return shortly, could we at least have numbers of what the impact, what expenditures have been undertaken in the past year, uh, by housing in, in support of this program? Is that okay?
Yes, you guys have that down, housing? Anybody, Jay or Stephanie, you understand the question?
Just what it cost, what's the cost to the Housing Department for this program in the last year?
Yeah, we're happy to follow up with that information.
Get through that information.
Thank you.
Perfect. We're gonna now move on to public testimony. Uh, do we, I think we had, Mel Freeman had his hand up.
Can you hear me?
Uh, there's, oh. Uh, Mr. Freeman?
Great, yes, yes, I'm here, thank you. Hi, everybody, happy Wednesday to you. I, um, would just like to jump in just for a quick second and say that I have been involved with this legislation since its birth. And, um, it's been a very, very tough child. Um, the key situation here is, I appreciate Councilman Dorsey's point that, you know, this law has been effective. We all know that it's been very, very ineffective. We created a few houses. The only thing I'd like to make a point here is that please don't throw this out without having any legislation in place. Whether this is one year or two years, it makes no difference. The legislation should make this law go away. So if this particular council is ready to jump in and create this legislation, by all means, get on it. But don't throw this one out in the meantime because I don't want any development project to get underway thinking that inclusionary housing is not important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we're gonna check the phones.
Uh, hello, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Matt Peters, Staff for the Committee. And, um, as I mentioned before, um, we, um, anybody who's on through computer can use the raise hand function to indicate they'd like to testify. Um, we do not have anybody else right now. Um, but please do so if you would like to testify. Um, and then for, um, phone users, we're not able, um, to do that. And so I'm going to go through one by one and unmute each person who has called in. Um, when you hear two beeps, please either indicate that you did not wish to testify or state your name and begin your testimony. Thank you. Uh, first caller is unmuted.
I do not wish to testify.
Thank you. And, uh, second caller is now unmuted. And take that as no response. Um, third caller.
I do not wish to.
Oh, thank you. Uh, next caller.
Uh, this is William Ariano, Chair of the, uh, the Committee, the, the Inclusionary Housing. Um, I would like to just, uh, reemphasize the fact as Mr. Freeman brought up, that this is a bill that has been in place for 13 years with little, um, accomplishment. But at the same time, it's important that something remain in place while the department is going along with their diligence, not only to look at the existing law, but look at those practices nationally as well as to get input from advocates on how this needs to be working. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next caller has been unmuted. Uh, no response. Uh, and the next caller is unmuted and can begin testimony.
I do not wish to testify.
Thank you. And, uh, the next caller, um, please go ahead.
I do not wish to testify.
Thank you. Uh, and next caller, should have just heard two beeps for being unmuted. No response. And, um, we have a few more callers. Okay, uh, next caller. And a response. Sorry, I'm just scrolling through to see if there are any additional callers. Uh, I think we may have one more.
Do not wish to testify.
Thank you. Hey, I believe that is all the callers. Um, we do not have any other hands raised. Oh, wait, we do have one additional hand raised. Um, is Ivy Dench Carter?
Yes, um, good afternoon, everyone. Um, as a member of the Inclusionary Housing Board, um, I'd like to reiterate some of the things that have been said about the importance of not letting this bill sunset. Um, it's extremely important, given, um, past and future um, occurrences and the need for affordable housing um, within Baltimore City. Um, and I'm sure that the transparency is extremely important, um, working with City Council through DHCD to make sure that, um, interest in low-income housing families in the city of Baltimore, um, are being attended to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam, we heard.
Uh, sorry, Madam Chair, there's, uh, one person who, um, sent a message, um, through the, the chat function, that he wasn't able to raise his hand. Um, that's, uh, sorry, uh, Matt Hill.
Yes, hi, thank you. Uh, this is Matt Hill. I'm an attorney at the Public Justice Center. I apologize, I can't get the hand raising function to work. Um, I just wanted to, uh, we, we've spoken with DHCD. There has been significant progress, as I understand it, made on wanting to get a consultant and, uh, put together the recommendations. Um, you know, I've been working with Barbara Samuels from the ACLU on this. Um, you know, there do appear to be ways that the current law could be improved. Um, and so we, we do not oppose an extension um, on the Inclusionary Housing Law Bill. Um, excuse me, the Inclusionary Housing Law. I mean, I would say though that I, I do completely agree with, with Councilman Dorsey and, and all the other folks who have spoken that the, the, the law as it's written and as it's enacted, and as it's applied now is completely ineffective and demands, um, pretty significant change, both in the way that it's currently applied as well as, as I understand, the consultant would work on recommending specific changes, uh, for how the law itself could be applied. And so my, my, my sense is that one way or the other, that that process needs to occur. Whether or not, in other words, there needs to be some reasoned, uh, thoughtful, dedicated process to make those changes. Um, and so the harm of having an extension on this law while that process is ongoing, um, it, it, to me, is not as, is not that significant. Um, but we do need to have a very quick process with, with, you know, timeframes and, and really specific goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, uh, believe that is all of the, uh, uh, public testimony that we have.
Thank you all. We'll now stand in recess until another day has been called for working. Thank you all, have a good day.
Now, wait a minute, there's a motion on the floor.
With the motion that got pulled back from Ryan, he pulled the motion back.
You pulled the motion back?
I believe so, yes.
I'm sorry.
He pulled most, both motions back.
So we're calling a vote on the bill?
No, we are.
The bill is now in recess.
All right, that's fine, that's good.
Okay, all right, we're moving on to the next bill, City Council Bill 20 dash 0526. Um, for the purpose of prohibiting the increase of rent during and after certain declared emergency, prohibiting, uh, certain notices to tenants, requiring certain notices to the tenants, prohibiting certain late fees, defining certain terms, providing for a date of termination of the, um, presentation, providing for a special effective date in generally relating to protecting Baltimore City tenants. Um, Chair recognizes the Council President.
Let me call him, uh, Shen, please.
Sorry about that, you guys. Uh, uh, for some reason, my sound was down. Uh, thank you, thank you, everybody. Uh, thank you for your work. I hope that everyone, as always, is healthy and safe as we deal with COVID-19. Uh, this piece of legislation, uh, that we introduced last week, we know how it's critically important. We know how COVID-19 has significantly impacted our residents. And we know 30 million Americans have lost their jobs, including 200,000 people in Maryland, many in the city of Baltimore as well. And what we do know, uh, we, while we know many people have not received any relief, including unemployment or stimulus relief. And we, when you don't know where your next check will come from, you shouldn't have to worry or stress about your landlord raising rent on the biggest health and economic emergency of our lifetime. During this time of uncertainty, especially, uh, without further action from Congress, we at the local level must do what we can to protect residents from further exposure. It's important to remember the unfortunate havoc that this health pandemic wreaked on our black community in Baltimore, not ensuring further rent security for this population and all of our rent and rental population in Baltimore will be absolutely detrimental, detrimental to any already impacted population. And let me be clear, the most important thing right now is the health and welfare of our residents. And I will continue to do everything in my power to support all Baltimoreans during this uncertain time. I'm grateful to the support of, of my colleagues and members of this committee who have signed on to this legislation. It's a true testament to this council's commitment to helping residents, uh, as we weather this unexpected storm. And I look forward to a great and productive hearing. I know there are some amendments that we're gonna discuss today. And we know that we can move this critical legislation so that we can get it, uh, before the mayor as quickly as possible to bring another round of relief to our residents in Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now gonna move, move to agency reports. We'll start off with the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Hello, uh, Stephanie Murdoch, Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh, DHCD stands by our report in support of the legislation. We are happy to help the administration communicate the provisions of this legislation, uh, to the public.
Perfect. Housing Authority.
Uh, Bill Wells for the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. So, uh, we submitted, um, a memo to the council and while in, um, support of the spirit of the proposed legislation, um, we have a concern about the, the conflict between this proposed legislation and, uh, federal law, which, because the Housing Authority is federally funded and abides by HUD's guidelines in terms of rent increases and decreases, that would, um, cause a, a difficulty for the Housing Authority. Um, specifically, the guidelines that the Housing Authority falls under um, stipulate when the Housing Authority must, uh, process rent increases in terms of, um, increases in rent, um, changes in family composition. For those reasons, um, you know, it, it fits within the spirit of this. Um, you know, those rent increases are a result of a scheduled reexamination of income and only occur in cases of, um, changes in family composition, more income coming into the, the family. But they're mandated through the, um, the policies and procedures of the Housing Authority from HUD. So there, there would be a conflict there between the proposed legislation and the federal rules that govern the Housing Authority.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll next hear from the Solicitor's Office.
Hi, Madam Chair, this is Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. We completely agree with HABC as we noted on, um, I believe it's page two in our report on federal preemption. In that section, we noticed, we noted that any time a federal law would apply here, uh, it would preempt the operation of this bill. So either an amendment to this bill to clarify that, that that's the case would work or in fact, you know, any court or lawyer reading. you know, any court or lawyer reading this would know, it can't operate to overrule those federal laws. So they would govern. And we mentioned, of course, the CARES Act also, which I'm sure Mr. Wells is aware of, has even now greater protections for those in federal housing who are suffering at the moment. They can't be evicted, and even the interest payments there can't be changed, you know, during this state of emergency. So we completely agree with HABC and would support whatever way the council wants to go on this. And in general, we stand by our report.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question of Ms. Ruley?
Sure, yes.
Ma'am, so it would satisfy the Law Department either way if we just approve the bill without that amendment, as it will be interpreted that way anyway, or if the amendment were to be approved, either way would satisfy the Law Department?
Absolutely, Mr. President, either way.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody on from the Department of Finance?
Hi, Madam Vice Chair, sorry, this is Mara James from the Department of Finance.
I'm back, sorry.
Pedro's back, he's speaking for us.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, I lost connection temporarily, and thank you, Mara. Madam Chair, the Department of Finance does not oppose the legislation. The only concern we have is that this type of measure may have some type of impact in property tax collection in the event that landlords might not be able to recoup the necessary amount of money for, come up with a property tax payments. We understand that this is a temporary solution, so it might not affect drastically the situation, but I just want to make you aware that it's a potential for certain property tax collections.
Thank you. Do any of the council members have any questions? Councilman at Risinger?
Second, can you hear me? Yeah, my, Madam Vice Chair, my question is to the Law Department and the sponsor of the bill. I know what the purpose is, I support it, but regards to landlord and tenant, is the, what about the small businesses and commercial resident citizens, how are they affected by this? Because they should be protected also.
My understanding, Mr. Chair, or sorry, Councilman Risinger, is that this is an addition to the current city code, and it's currently in a place that only covers residential. So we didn't study this from a commercial standpoint.
Right, well, that's why I brought it up, Mr. President, because there's some small businesses that could be affected through this coronavirus, that they could raise their rent from the landlord. And I feel that those businesses should be protected, just as the residents should be protected.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Councilman. Ms. Ruley is right, the intent of this bill was simply to go about renters and residential facilities, but I am more than open and welcome to a friendly amendment that tackles small businesses as well.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. President, thank you for your leadership on this. So Councilwoman Snead, I would like to offer a friendly amendment when the time comes.
Okay, we'll come back, we'll come back to it for the under amendment. Ryan, Councilman Dorsey, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Risinger took the words out of my mouth. I would support an amendment to make this apply to both residential and commercial tenants. I received a communication from a constituent last week who asked about that specifically, and reading of the text, my reading of the text of the bill, seeing that it did not specify either residential or commercial, I interpreted it to be inclusive of both, and that was my response, that I would read this bill in its original text to apply to both. And so, and I wholly support the idea of it applying to commercial as well. So if there's a motion from Councilman Risinger, I'd like to second that, but I guess we're going to hear some other things first. Thank you.
Yes, I want to get through all the, make sure we could do all the questions, public testimony, before we get to all of the amendments. Any other questions? Pedro, I see you, you want to go?
Yeah, I just want to make you aware that even though we didn't put a fiscal impact or value in it, now that it's a potential for amendment to the legislation, taking care of small businesses, that will probably escalate a little bit more the risk for on payment of real property taxes. We understand the situation, we are supportive, and we understand how difficult times these are, but in terms of the financial situation for the city, this might, you know, escalate to a different level. I just want to bring that up.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to the council president, he has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I think if all of our colleagues are finished with their comments, I know that there are amendments from law that will work. But I would like to hear from all of our colleagues first, before we go onto those amendments.
I have just a question.
Yes, Councilman Mary Pat Clark has a question.
Sorry, I fell off of the thing and I had to get back in. I have two questions about the bill. One, is it effective for 90 days, or is it effective till the 121st day after the, that we're under this crisis that we're under? In other words, there's two different, in my version of the bill, it says 90 days after the regime ends, the stay-at-home regime ends, is how long this is effective? And then at the very end, it talks about it going, staying in effect, I thought it said, until the 121st day after that. So I'm just trying to, I support the bill, I don't care which it is, I just wondered which it was. And secondly, the other question I had is, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Councilwoman, we can hear you okay.
Thank you. My other ques, so that's one question, it's sort of a technical question, but the second one is this. In the legislation, on page two, lines 26, 27, 28, they talk about a landlord may not charge or otherwise assess a tenant for non-payment or late payment of a rental fee during an emergency or within the 90 days after the expiration of an emergency. But can a landlord, like water billing does, can a landlord carry those fees up and charge them after the fact, or is the intention that they don't exist during this period, and therefore, there's nothing to carry up? Those are my two questions.
I'm happy to address those questions if it pleases the Chair. This is Hillary from the Law Department.
Yes, thank you, please, Hillary.
Okay, so let me go first, question first on the 90 days versus the 120. My understanding is that the 90 days runs from the expiration of the emergency. So during the entire emergency and the nine days after is what?
Cured.
Yeah, it's the term that the landlord can't send, can't ask for late fees and must rescind any notice, not send any notice on a ready increase. The last paragraph in the bill is my understanding that this bill itself basically will be on the books for 121 days after the expiration of the emergency. So it stays on the books slightly longer than its terms are applicable. That's how I read it. Again, you know, I think if you're confused, certainly that doesn't bode well for everyone, and, you know, obviously, you can change. And then with respect to the second question, it's completely unclear. We only reviewed the bill for what's on its face. We have no indication, based on the language here, what a court would do with respect to rent increases that would have gone into effect, but didn't. So the practical implication, I think, is really difficult to ascertain. I'm not sure if more clarity would be good in the language, or if it's really unclear at this point, what, you know, what would happen. I think a lot depend on what does the terms of a particular lease say. But again, you know, it's completely new territory, I'm not sure how any court would deal with that.
Unless we specify. I mean, is Hillary, Ms. Ruley, if there were specific, if the language were clarified, it was my impression, well, with water bills, they never go away. Maybe you don't have to pay them right away or something, but they're always going to chase you down. That's not, if we're inventing a system for an emergency, I think that's something we'd like to avoid. At least I would, I'll vote for it either way, but I know we'll all get the phone calls when we hit the 90th day, and we should live so long, when we hit the 90th day, and people get a bill for, you know, four months' worth of penalties for not paying an increase, or something like that.
Right. And I hear you. I think that, obviously, it's always better to clarify it, but from our research, we cannot tell what a court would do, if it would consider that language legal and valid or not. We really don't know in this situation. We also don't know, as the report said, you know, if the governor, or the federal government, or the General Assembly were to come up with some scheme to address that, then obviously, then that would govern over this law. So it's hard to say what would happen on the backside, but if you want to clarify it, you certainly could, but I couldn't guarantee how a court would interpret it.
Yeah, at least it might help in a court hearing, because if that was the intent of the sponsor, so if that's the intent, that we don't do like we do with water bills, with that, like, you don't do this, and it doesn't carry over to a certain 90th, 91st day, and then all of a sudden, it's all there on top of the rent. I mean, if you're going to do this, that's my opinion. Sponsor prevails, he's our president, and I have a respect for what he's doing, don't want to confuse the issue, but I don't want to be on the, I don't want to be answering questions at the end of the 90 days about why everybody got this big rent bill, or the penalty bill. So, thank you, everybody. I just wanted to bring it up, if anybody wants to do anything about it, or not. Thank you, Ms. Ruley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could respond to?
Yes.
Council President for life, Mary Pat Clark. Councilwoman, thank you, thank you for bringing up that concern. That's something that we were trying to work around, and we heard the same things from legal folks about it might not be able to be applicable either way. But with that being said, make sure as we get towards Monday, when we get done with this, this is something that we could talk about also, just alongside with Councilman Risinger, as an amendment for the floor, if we're able to get something done correctly, approved by law and drafted.
Appreciate that, frankly. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with technology today, but yeah, let's give it a try. Should, or will some?
Kayla will give you a call.
Thank you very much.
I see another handout from Councilman Robert Stokes. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, have we actually had a conversation with the courts, anyway? Because I think that's something we should look at also, because Ms. Hillary Ruley was talking about, they don't know exactly what the court, we can't overrule the court, are we going to have a conversation with the court, to see if we're going to be adding or changing or putting amendments to this bill, what it looks like? So when it gets, the amendments get put in here, we know exactly how a court is going to react to this particular legislation.
Does anybody from the Law Department or the Council President's Office want to answer Councilman Stokes' question?
Sure, this is Hillary from the Law Department. I don't know that a court would give us an advisory opinion on what might happen. We've looked across the country, and we can't really find a lot of guidance. I think you're in the same boat as most other cities and states at this point about how, you know, it's one thing to freeze during an emergency, but it's very difficult to figure out how it works on the backside. You know, we didn't really find a ton of guidance there. In addition, I just want to mention, before it gets lost, if the intent really is to go to capture commercial, the Law Department would defer to Legislative Reference on how to draft that, because right now, this is language that's inserted into, into subtitle eight of Article 13 of the city code, and the parts of that code that aren't included in the bill language but are still there in the law and would be applicable here, define the premises at issue as residential, and they define the tenants as residential. So that's all we looked at. We didn't look at an analysis on commercial. I mean, you could certainly do that in a separate bill if you wanted, and we could look at it, but if you intend to amend this bill, we would need some help from Legislative Reference. I'm not sure where you want to put it, because it wouldn't really go here in the housing and urban renewal part of the city code.
Thank you, Ms. Ruley. We'll make sure that we talk to Councilman Risinger and the other members, Councilman Dorsey, about that, and figure out, working with you guys and DLR, to figure out the best way forward, so that we're able to move this, and if we have to add it to this, or amend, or do a separate bill, we'll come to the best decision as we all continue to work together during this emergency.
Any other questions for our council colleagues? If not, we're going to move on to public testimony.
Well, Councilwoman, there are amendments that we need to discuss. You're muted, Councilwoman.
The Law Department and the Council President's Office put in some amendments. Do, does the Law Department want to explain the amendments first?
Sure, I'm happy to do so. Again, it's Hillary Ruley for the Law Department. The bill, like I just mentioned, is stuck in an existing section of the city code, and in that existing section, it talks about the tenants enforcing that section by bringing any court action necessary. Well, the section was originally crafted to help tenants with code violations in their unit, for example, no water, no heat, no light. There's already a state law on that, and so it's not clear to us that any tenant really proceeds to correct those violations using the city code. Perhaps they do. But once you expand this from being simply about code violations, and you add in there increases during an emergency, it's really not clear that the city can give the tenant another reason to sue their landlord. There's pretty good case law that occurred after, when that original bill or the original code section was written, that sort of calls that into question. It's very hard to say how a court would view that. So all we're doing is recommending, we don't require, but if you would like to add an additional enforcement mechanism by essentially having an ECB violation, and telling a landlord, look, if you raise the rent during this time, one of the enforcement tools available would be the city to send you an ECB violation notice for $1,000 a day, and I drafted it at the maximum level, because I assume it would be a deterrent. You know, what's the point of trying to raise the rent if you know you'll end up owing the city thousands of dollars a day? So that was an enforcement mechanism that's available to you, should a court decide that this really isn't a way for a tenant to debate the amount of rent that the landlord is charging them. So that's the First Amendment. It looks really long in our amendments, but it's just trying to incorporate the language amendments, but it's just trying to incorporate the language that would allow it to be also in the ECB section of the code. And then the Second Amendment is simply to make it clear that it's not so much, you know, a rental relief act. It's it's a relief act to prevent rental increases. So that was just a clarifier. But we're prepared to approve the bill with or without the amendments. But we just thought we would put them there for the council's consideration, because, again, you know, it's sticking this thing into a part of the law that was designed for essentially premises defects. So it's a little bit of an odd fit. That's all.
And just for for our colleagues, these amendments from law are ones that I support adding to the bill.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. Are we at a point of taking a vote on some amendments here? Because having having been down the road of asking the questions in the past about whether or not the city has a the authority to create a private right of action, I understand what Hillary is explaining here with respect to the city not having the authority to give a person the right to sue their lawyer, to sue their landlord, or or any person. And so I would make a motion to support the amendment to create a civil penalty through ECB violation, as suggested by Hillary.
Second the motion.
All right.
Do a roll call, Madam Chair.
Bill Wells has his hand up.
Madam Chair, you have to do, you have to do roll call vote.
All right. Okay. So let's start with roll call. Let's start with me, Shannon Snee. Yes. At Risinger, chair.
Hear me, yes?
Yes. Mary Pat Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Erica Sello.
Yes.
Councilman Ryan Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Leon Pickett.
Yes.
And Councilman Robert Stokes.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Councilman Robert Stokes.
Were we voting? I missed it, I'm sorry.
Yes.
On the amendments, or on the bill?
On on one amendment, yes. Not the entire amendment, or the last amendment.
Okay, yes.
So you have, you have ayes, no opposed for the first amendment. Now, you want to go to Council President.
Thank you. I just want to say, to our colleagues, and my colleagues, but this, this, hold on, someone mute themselves. Councilwoman, I think that's you, Councilwoman Clark. Oh, yep, it was. Just wanted to note again, from the Law Department, from Mrs. Ruley, that the HABC amendment is not needed. So I don't want this amendment, because Hillary says that the law is going to not be impacted one way or another.
Okay, that was the third amendment that you're talking about. So we won't introduce that at
Yeah, I mean, they can introduce it, but that's up to, that's up to the committee.
If it's if it's not needed, I don't, I don't see why we are
Point of information, Madam Chair.
Does HABC want to explain this bill that they introduced?
Yes. Yes. And so I can explain the amendment. And then for the points of law, I have Greg Rothwell from our Office of Legal Affairs, who can address any legal points. But HABC suggested that in order to clarify and remove any potential conflict with federal law, that Section 84B scope have an amendment that added further, nothing in this section would apply to a landlord who must comply with federal law, regulation, or other federal requirements in determining the amount of a tenant's annual rental fee. So that was our suggested amendment.
Madam Chair. I'm just moving the amendment. Do I, a second. It basically clarifies so that every one of our constituents can see that the their public housing is unfortunately exempted. So that is clear. That's all. Does anybody want to second me, or does it just hang here?
I have a question.
It's just going to, unless someone second, is anyone want to second this?
I second, I second.
Okay, Councilwoman seconds it.
Question?
Let's do a roll call for
It's the question. It's the question on the on the motion.
The question is pertaining to the amendment.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Dorsey.
Was I right to understand that the Law Department's position is that this is essentially redundant, that it's not necessary to state that we can't pass a law that conflicts with any federal law, as we are preempted from conflicting with federal law as it is?
Yes. Yes, this is Hillary from the Law Department, exactly right. Whether you clarify or not, is up to you. It will not operate to change HABC's requirements under federal law. They would take precedent.
Right. And so my understanding that the reason that the Council President expressed that his inter, his lack of interest in this amendment is for the sake of redundancy, which I understand and support. Thank you.
Speaking, I'm speaking on behalf of my motion. May I?
Yes, you, you can.
Just so I can speak on the motion. Thank you.
Okay, go, go ahead.
There's redundancy can also be translated as transparency. This is not for the benefit of a court system, or a bureaucrat. This is for the, this is for the benefit of a lot of people in this city, who are going to read this very closely, and see if they're covered. And if they, if we, I mean, and then they will call to say, I live at so and so, a public HABC location, and I've I've just got a increase in my rent. And the law says it can't happen. I'm just saying, this is not for us, this is not for the courts, this is not for the Law Department. This is something we can show and talk about to constituents when they call. That's the only reason. Sometimes redundancy is really transparency for the public. That's all.
Councilman at Risinger.
Yes, Madam Chair, can you hear me? Can you hear, yeah. If, I disagree with my colleague in regards to transparency. I think that if the Law Department has made the statement, they clarified that it's redundant, that we don't need, we don't need it, then why are we making a motion and voting for something that's not needed? Did you hear that?
Yes. Madam Chair, may I speak?
Yes. And soon as you speak, we're going to move to the Council President, if he has something to say.
I, I'm doing it because of the reason I said, if that doesn't suit you, vote against the motion, and we'll be done with it. But I'd be on the record, at least, of having it explained, so that I can say something to people who call me that said they've been robbed. Because they have every reason, they don't know. That's all. How could they? I mean, they got lives to live.
Now, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Clark, and Councilman Rising, and Councilman Dorsey. For me, you guys, again, listen, I, what I want from this is a clean bill, that's easy to interpret, to understand, and that's in accordance with the advice that we're getting from the Law Department. So that's just my advice to the committee as we move forward.
Mr. President, if I may, I'll just withdraw my motion. I don't want to, I mean, maybe there are different interpretations of transparency. It's his bill, I support it. I apologize to you, Mr. Wells, because you sure are a good representative of the agency all the time. But I'm going to lose the vote. I don't want to be, have us defeated, okay? So I'm going to withdraw my motion, and would ask my second, kindly seconded, if she would do that as well.
Councilwoman Green Middleton, will you withdraw your second?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's been removed. Okay, so can we go back to the Law, oh, Council President, were you, were you saying, okay. So can we go back to the Law Department amendment, so we can then vote on their amendment? So
Point of order, Madam Chair, I thought you guys voted on the Law Department amendment already.
That was just amendment number, the first amendment number one. We have it.
Madam Chair.
Okay, you have the floor, Councilman Dorsey.
For clarification, can I have, can I ask that the Law Department read the Second Amendment from them again, so that I may make a motion on it, and have it clear what we're voting on?
Yes.
I'm happy to do that. This is Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. Amendment number two would just be to delete the word renter in the title of the bill, and rent increase. It would, just to be to clarify that this is from rent increase.
I make a motion to approve this bill. I mean, this, this amendment.
Second.
Perfect. So I have four, he seconded, and I'm just going to pull down the list. Right here, at Risinger.
Yes.
Shannon Snee, yes. Mary Pat Clark.
Yes.
Erica Sello. Yes. Erica Sello.
Yes.
And Dorsey.
Yes.
Leon Pickett.
Yes.
Sharon Green Middleton.
Yes.
And Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
All right, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
It's not.
And no opposed, seven, yes, no opposed. And so that amendment make it, made it.
Is approved.
Yes, it is approved. Now we have the
That's it.
The Council President. Nope, we have the Council President's Office amendment.
Oh, oh, oh.
So, does anyone want to motion for the Council President's amendment? Council President?
Why are they?
Do you want to say your amendment again?
I, I
Madam Chair, may I have a floor for a moment? Thank you. Mr. President, this is the amendment on behalf of MMHA.
Ten, ten for Councilman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. Madam Chair, I'd like to move Council President Scott's amendment.
We have a mo-
Mr. Councilman, can you actually read, read the amendment for our colleagues, please?
Yeah.
Sure thing. Please hold on, let me pull it up.
Yes, sir.
And we can also put it on a screen.
Amendment one, on page three, after line 16, after, and acting, as
What, wait a minute. Page three, line 14, after, enacted and ad and implied prospectively. Point of information. May I ask what it means? What is it that we are asked to extend as, to, something applies prospectively? What is it? Then, meaning it applies going forward, but it doesn't apply backward, right? Is that what it means? And what is it? Thanks.
Does anyone want to answer?
Yeah. Mr. President, I'm happy to take this one on, if you'd like.
Yes, Mrs. Councilman, go ahead. I was going to chime in, but you you introduced the amendment, so go ahead, close yours.
So, this would, this would make the rent increase provision of the legislation prospective to avoid complications with leases that have already renewed since the emergency order from the governor, which was on March 5. So it's a common practice for management companies to send lease renewal offers out 90 days advance. So reverse, so reversing this, the formerly agreed upon increases for many residents may be strenuous on the landlords, as well as on the renters themselves. So this, this would basically say that if you had signed terms of a lease 90 days out before, before the March 5 date, those terms of that lease would stay in place. And this, you know, the amendment comes from the President, so he's obviously supporting it. Thank you.
Question. So, there are some, there are some lease increases that I thought if they took effect during the protected period, even if they originated before it, were covered, that would have been down in that, I haven't got this thing memorized, or anything, but it seems to me that if you I mean, if it took, if it took effect, if it got done earlier, but it took effect in the protected length of time, that would not be prospective, because it was done, the rent increase was done, but it didn't take, was agreed to, but it didn't take effect until into the protected period of time. Are we sure that, given how this is, how the law is written, are we sure that prospectively is what we intended in all cases? I, I don't have time to sit down and read this carefully right now, and I'm sure you did. But it
Yes, yes.
There's a lot of back and forth in the law.
Okay, let him, hold on. He, I think Councilman Sello was trying to answer, but I missed.
I'm sorry, my apologies.
That's okay. Yes, I'm Yes, I'm sure, to answer your question in short, I will defer to Council President Scott for any other comments on this.
Yes, just, just to reiterate what the Councilman said, Councilwoman, this is something that we did work on, make sure that we're doing everything appropriately, and of course, as always, we will always, and I will always follow the advice of the Law Department as well, to make sure that we're doing everything within, everything that we can do. So what we'll do to double, just to satisfy the committee and the members, we will again do, do more work before the meeting on Monday, hold this amendment, Madam Chair, and run it.
Oh, that's all, that's great, because I don't want to be living with prospectively, well, I won't have to be, but I don't want y'all to be living with it.
Madam Chair.
You know what I mean? I trust you. I'm just asking you to take just a careful, careful...
We'll make sure.
Thank you all, thank you.
Madam Chair, I withdraw my motion.
Got it, Councilman Costello, you just withdrew. Okay, so we are done with all amendments, and like I said, I missed something, but I don't think I have, but I saw some hands go up. So, Councilman Raisinger, did you have a question?
Yes, I mean, are we finished with the agency amendments? And then we'll go on to the committee amendments, so how are you working it?
So we are finished with all of the, we went through each individual, and so we're finished with all of them. Everyone explained each one that was proposed, and so now we're done, and we can go ahead and vote on the bill. The only amendment that we said that we would come back to was the last one, but I guess we're going to come to that and there may be a...
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Do I have a second? Oh, wait. We have not done with testimony, we haven't done, we haven't held it, everyone, we have not done public testimony. And so we have some...
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will go through the public testimony for this bill, this is the committee staff, Matt Peters. Just before I do, I was asked to put the, the raise hand function back up on screen just so that everybody would be able to see it. So anybody from the public who's joined by computer who would like to testify should be able to indicate so by clicking on the button with the three dots and then raise hand, and that will let us know that you'd like to testify, and then we will move to attendees in the public who have joined by phone. So to get started, we have several individuals who have their hands raised. First one is Matt Hill. Please go ahead.
Yes, hi. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, members of the committee, Matt Hill, Public Justice Center. I'll be brief, you have our written testimony on behalf of our organization, the Probono Resource Center, the ACLU of Maryland, Fair Housing Action Center, Communities United, Bolton Health, Residents Association, and Jews United for Justice. This is important legislation, and I want to thank the Council President and every, all the support members for bringing this, this forward. A number of local jurisdictions are moving forward on similar legislation because we have not gotten anything statewide. I want to say on the late fees piece, this, this is very important. We're getting a lot of clients right now calling us saying, my landlord is still charging me late fees. In fact, we had one client the other day who talked to their rather large management company who actually has a federally subsidized property and said, you're not allowed to charge me late fees. Now, my client thought the prohibition came from Governor Hogan. She was a little wrong about that, it comes from, from the federal government, but the landlord's response was, well, Governor Hogan doesn't live here. So this is really critical, it's important, and it's something that, that our clients need to provide at least just a little bit of relief during this emergency, similarly for the, the rent increases. That's something that is coming up again and again, and we want to make sure that we're not throwing fuel on the fire of the eviction crisis that, that is likely pending. Just on a couple of points that came up in the discussion so far, Section 3 says that the, the bill expires in 120 days. I think if you deleted that section, that line in Section 3, you'd probably solve the issue that Councilwoman Clark brought up about how, you know, well, what after the end of the 90 days happens to those late fees or those rent increases? As long as you don't have something in there saying in 120 days, this whole, this whole law goes away, then the prohibition still stays in place. In terms of retrospective versus prospective, I, you know, just heard about this the first time, you know, five minutes ago, and I, you know, we're, we're very concerned about not, about trying to make sure that we, let me put this another way, there's no reason that the council couldn't prohibit all of the late fees in particular retrospectively. So, because there's absolutely no reason landlords should be charging late fees at this particular moment. And then for the rent increases, that's, that's, I understand the, the point, but for us, you know, when our clients are already, again, so close to the edge, and we're close to the edge even before the crisis began, that's a very difficult proposition for them, that they have to accept these rent increases in the middle of a pandemic. At the end of my testimony, I just want to point out a couple things. The other major thing we're hearing from our clients is that landlords are giving tenants a 30 or 60, my client says to the landlord, hey, I can't pay my rent, I lost my job, I'm not getting my unemployment insurance yet, and the landlord is saying, oh, well, here's your 60-day notice to vacate. That is not covered by Governor Hogan's eviction moratorium. Now, the landlord can't move forward on that because the courts are closed right now. The courts have imposed an eviction moratorium. But once that's lifted, we assume Governor Hogan's more limited eviction moratoriums are going to be in place, but this is a huge loophole, and the landlords, many of the landlord folks know this, and that's why they're sending that 60-day notice, particularly for month-to-month tenants, which we have a lot of month-to-month tenants, their lease expires and they just remain on a month-to-month basis. A landlord can send a 60-day notice to terminate regardless of, of the reason, so landlords are doing that. Howard County has already recognized this, and they proposed a bill that cited in my testimony, and I've attached it to the testimony I sent, that would essentially stop landlords from exploiting this loophole, and so I hope the council will come back and consider that issue because that is something that we're seeing from an awful lot of tenants, and it is a major loophole of what the governor's done. The other thing is mass, large-scale emergency rental assistance and eviction prevention. So the city has been allocated a significant amount of money, $13 million in CDBG funds, that's Community Development Block Grant, $6 million in emergency shelter grants, and $103 million in coronavirus relief funds. That's from the New Cares Act as well. Any of those funds can be used for emergency rental assistance. We have a need in, in this city, we estimated roughly 20,000 households who are going to have trouble paying April, May, June, July, possibly further, and, you know, we don't, there's no plan right now. We know that the DHCD, the City Department of Housing and Community Development is working on one, and we've been in contact with, with the Commissioner, with, with Mr. Green, and we appreciate their efforts, but we need the mayor to act quickly to allocate funds and get this plan moving because the courts, again, are going to be reopening June 8th, and this eviction moratorium could expire, we don't know, very soon after, and so we need a plan to provide real relief, the money is there, and we need, we really want the council in some way to, to really focus on getting the mayor and, and all folks involved to, to make this happen, because while this legislation is really important and necessary, this rental relief is even more critical, frankly. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person who has their hand raised, Aaron Greenfield.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee, Aaron Greenfield, on behalf of MMHA. Like many of your constituents, our communities are also sort of struggling with this pandemic and certainly recognize the, the cost and the, not just the economic, but the, the human and health costs associated with our residents, and we've unfortunately, like everyone else, had to change, have had to change our operations, enhanced our cleaning. We have set out to our members, which I'm happy to share with the council, best practices that would include waiving late fees, payment plans, freeze on rent increases, all the things that, that, that this bill sort of speaks to, and would sort of echo Mr. Hill's comment about a rental assistance fund, is something that we would adamantly support and would support whether it's through the shoring up of maybe the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, or through the CDBG dollars that were recently allocated through the Cares Act. As Councilman Costello touched on quite well, we do think that, that an amendment, making sure this is prospective, is needed because, as is the practice, oftentimes notices provided 60, 90 days before a lease renewal, and in that case, and in the case that we have before us, you could have a lease renewal that was agreed to on April 1st, and the emergency order was set on March 5th. It becomes a bit of a challenge from business practice in terms of crediting back, and, and so, you know, it is a bit of a challenge for us, and it's one that we would suggest be prospective, and clearly you have this bill that's in effect for, you know, 90 days beyond the date upon which the emergency order is lifted. I'd like to just, and I appreciate the Council President considering that to be a friendly amendment, for, for all those reasons, we do support this and would welcome any further discussions on this issue. Thank you very much.
Can I ask?
I apologize, please go ahead, Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you very much, I'll try to keep it short. I have the, I do have what, your letter, thank you very much, Mr. Greenfield. Could you just go through one more time, please, how you're describing this? In other words, the prospectively, so, let's say, I got a rent hike, I got a notice of it, and it, and it was, it was before the period that started that, the March date that is listed, but it goes into effect in April, so it would still, I presume that that would still apply for ever, correct? For the, for wiping out that raise, since it, it was, it straddled the pre and the effective times, it would be eligible to not have that rent increase until after the whole, the whole pre, this is over and days later.
Yeah, that's accurate. So if, if a lease renewal notice goes out to raise rent 3% in January effective April 1st, okay, then you have this emergency order that went into effect March 5th. What this bill does is it goes back and captures that, that April 1st rent increase date, and it then sort of, it squashes it in effect, and then it creates this bill with the amendments from the, the...
I'm sorry, would you say, it goes, all right, so this, this increase started, would you say that again for me? I, slower than most of my colleagues.
Sure, so a lease renewal notice goes out in January for the rent to go up 3% in April.
Oh, right. There's...
So this emergency began per the bill, per the governor's order on March 5th.
Right.
Okay? Under the Council President's bill, because it is not clearly marked as prospective, upon passage of this bill, anytime between March 5th and going forward, we'd have to go back and recalculate and reimburse effectively the resident, even though the terms have already been agreed upon.
Okay, so you don't have to go back to when, to January then, even though the, even though it straddles the dates, so you can only move prospectively?
What I'm saying is...
Adjusting, adjusting, and not, in other words, what do you do? Like, do you say, oh, do you reduce that rent then from the 7th or whatever of March forward?
Well, you'd have to then go back through and credit back April 1, back to, I assume, March 5th, or actually, Frank, from April 1st when the lease renewal began, so you'd have to reimburse those dollars back. See, it gets, to your question, Councilwoman, it gets a little bit sticky, but let me just add this other layer of complication.
But you're not going backwards to that whole time that the rent increase happened, even though it strongly straddles, its, its origins straddle into the area we're trying to avoid the raises in.
The way I read the bill is it would only apply to any lease rate increases that occurred after the emergency order, and what we're suggesting is that this go from the date that it's signed, in addition to the three months after the emergency order is lifted. Let me get to this other point.
Okay, I, I understand, so you don't go backwards, you're just going forwards, but go ahead.
Right, but let me get to this other point, with, with respect to the fine, the $1,000 a day fine, if this bill isn't prospective, this could create, I mean, if you have a 200 or 300 unit complex and you have 30 units that have renewed, you're looking at a $30,000 a day tab if you didn't actually go back and recalculate and reimburse. This gets to be a bit of a logistical nightmare, and that's why, again, we would urge, again, we support the bill, but would urge that it's prospective in nature, so you capture those lease renewals that have gone forward rather than the reimbursements, the reimbursement challenge.
Okay. Yep, thank you very much for taking the time, I really appreciate it, and I much better understand, and I'm a little worried, but hey, thanks at least for the letter, and yeah, thanks a lot for, you know, pitching in.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Eric?
Councilman Costello, may I please be recognized?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. President, after that explanation, are you comfortable with me reintroducing that amendment, or would you prefer to hold that until Monday?
Yeah, let's just hold it until Monday, Mr. Councilman, since we've already moved to public testimony.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And next person signed up to testify is Karen Wabacki.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name's Karen Waback, I'm an attorney with the Homeless Persons Representation Project. Appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on this, I'll be very brief. We support this bill, we think it's a good and necessary and important first step, however we, to echo my colleague from the Public Justice Center, we hope that this is only a first step. We know that there is a tsunami-sized wave of evictions coming, when some of the protections that are in place are, end, and when the courts reopen, and so, again, I would echo Mr. Hill's recommendations that this council and the mayor look at getting a robust rental assistance and eviction prevention program up and running as soon as possible, and explore legislation to close and address the loophole for landlords who are sending 30- and 60-day notices. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person is Matt Garono. Please go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you. My name's Matt Garono, I'm a resident and landlord in Fells Point, and I really haven't heard any consideration for the landlords in any of these discussions today on this bill or the previous one, and, you know, we're constituents too, so, you know, there are still many people who are employed, our landlord expenses are still going up, and our biggest line item... Um, our landlord expenses are still going up and our biggest line item, which is real estate taxes, are going to go up again July 1. So in the spirit of, um, you know, making the bill fair for everyone, I guess, um, I would suggest some sort of amendment to put a halt on real estate tax increases starting July 1 to give, uh, the landlords a little relief. Because we're not all, you know, big, uh, multifamily operators. We're majority mom and pop shops. And, uh, you know, we still have to pay our bills during this time and we're counting on those rental increases, um, for that purpose. So we're not going to have that. Then we're going to be in a shortfall. So I would suggest, you know, something to, to help out the landlords also. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next person, uh, Joe Magar.
Uh, hi, my name is Joe Magar. I live in District 14 and I'm part of JWJ, expressing support for this bill. And wanted to note that further measures must be taken to prevent Baltimore's eviction crisis from taking an even more catastrophic turn, including protecting tenants from having their leases terminated or not renewed. I also request the council to urge the mayor to immediately allocate funds to rental assistance and eviction prevention. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next person, um, Rihanna Lloyd.
Hi, uh, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Rihanna. I live in the 11th District. I'm the Baltimore Community Organizer at Jews United for Justice, which is part of the Baltimore Renters United Coalition. Um, I wanted to thank Council President Scott for introducing this bill and, uh, echo what a lot of folks have been saying, um, voice my strong support for this bill. Um, relief for renters is critical, uh, now especially more than ever. Um, and in order to prevent, um, a catastrophic and higher rate of eviction at the end of this state of emergency, I hope that this bill can be passed in its strongest possible form. And wanted to echo what Matt Hill and many of our other coalition partners stated, um, that the, the mayor and the council should immediately allocate funds to rental assistance and eviction prevention and pursue, uh, further legislation aimed at stopping landlords from terminating or refusing to renew leases. Thank you.
Thank you. And the, um, uh, next person is, uh, Molly Amster.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, this is Molly Amster. I'm the Baltimore Director for Jews United for Justice. And, um, I just wanted to echo everything that's already been said. Um, really appreciate this bill being introduced and look forward to more action being taken. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, that is the, um, uh, the last raised hand. Um, we do have some people who have joined by phone. Um, so I'll go through, um, and unmute each one individually. And, um, if you would like to testify, you can state your name and begin to testify. And if you do not want to testify, please just say, um, you have no testimony. Uh, first one. Um, okay, uh, no response. Um, the second caller. Also no response. Uh, next caller.
Hi, yes, this is Andrew Cohen from Liberty Group Holdings. I would like to make a statement, please. Um, I would first like to echo what Matt Garono just said regarding a little consideration for landlords if we could. Um, but I'm more focused on the well-being of tenants today and I'm doing that through the protest of the removal of late fees, if you will. You know, that sounds a bit odd, but hear me out. Um, for starters, last month, our Baltimore portfolio collected 90% of our rents. So I think that's pretty strong, uh, given the economic environment right now. Um, my point today is that if you remove the one incentive for a resident to pay their rent and not incur any fees, they probably won't pay it. They probably also won't save that for a future date when their rent is due with penalties. So my point being, this is going to lead to a further downward spiral of credit for, uh, a poor credit for tenants. This will lead to a spike in evictions. Um, I think, while I'm not a huge fan of the proposed legislation, I think there should be some sort of amendment for the late fees specifically. Leave the rest of it in there. Um, I think this will go a long way to keep people in their residences in the long term. Um, on a side note, any resident, or excuse me, any landlord who is not working with their tenants on payment plans, uh, deferment of late fees or cancellation of late fees, they're probably not, they probably don't have their eyes on the ball to begin with because that is again going to lead to a downward spiral. We are working with anyone who approaches us and can prove financial hardship due to COVID-19. Um, I would also like to propose some sort of offset to real estate taxes if we are going to be, um, deprived of our late fees and rent increases. Because our insurance is still going up, our taxes are still going up. I still have to make repairs to all these buildings. So it's almost a double bottom line effect. And that's all I need to say today. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next caller.
Oh, hello. My name's Greg Rathor and I'm a senior counsel with the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. And I'd just like to speak briefly about the amendment that would have exempted HABC from this law. Um, I agree with the councilwoman that it makes the law much clearer to everybody. And without the, the amendment, um, HABC is in a position of having to explain to all the residents who do get a rent increase why they are exempted. It also puts us in a position of having to educate all the judges who would hear the rent court cases. And, um, even though it may be a matter of law as stated by the law department, it makes it much easier for all parties if the law is actually written, written to make that very, very clear. Otherwise, you, you could get into, into a position where a judge may find that the law applies to the housing authority, which would then put us in a position of having to file appeals, take the case up, through the appellate process as far as need be to get a ruling. And even though judges are presumed to know the law, having been a trial attorney for over 40 years, I have lost track of the number of times when judges misapply the law. So I would just respectfully urge the committee to reconsider the amendment that would exempt the housing authority from the, from the provisions of the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, I think that is everyone who is joined by calling in and all hands.
All right, we can move on.
Madam Chair, can, before you, before you end, end this, can I just say something really quickly?
Hmm, we saw you voted out, but sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to say before, before you guys voted out, to let everyone know, I appreciate all the comments and, and especially from the gentleman who, who pointed out that, like most landlords in Baltimore, people are working with their, their tenants. And as he said, if someone's trying to, uh, charge people late fees and things like, right now, they're not, they're not having their eye on what's actually happening. So we absolutely, uh, to everyone listening, this is only the beginning as we're going to continue to try to figure out ways to, uh, protect everyone, our residents, our tenants, of, of course, in Baltimore, but also understanding that we're having a, a deep impact on our landlords as well. So while we continue to advocate, uh, at the higher levels of government, to the highest level in the federal government that they need to do in these net, in this next package of direct assistance to renters and/or landlords to make sure. And we will, uh, put our, our big boots on and figure out whatever we can do locally as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we don't have any further questions or comments. We can move on. We will just go out. Do we have a motion on the floor? Oh, uh, can you hear me now?
I sent you the mo, this is the motion to vote the bill as amended, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I sent the motion to move the bill as amended.
And these. Second. And Mary Pat Clark. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Erica Sella and we have a second by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. And.
Great team.
I'm gonna go down the line, um, chair, as Edward Risinger.
Yes.
Perfect. Councilwoman Shannon Snead, yes. Councilwoman Pat Clark?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Erica Sella?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Eric, uh, Ryan Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sharon Gray Middleton?
Yes.
Councilman Leon Pickett?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Stokes?
Yes.
Perfect. We have, uh, 88s and no opposed. And so this bill moves to, um, the second reader and this bill, uh, second reader. And the, the committee will report the bill to the full council on May the 11th. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilman Risinger.
That's what we just voted on agency amendments. The amendment that I asked for regards to including the businesses in commercial, can I make a motion on that?
No, Mr. Mr.
We're to wait till the council meeting.
Yeah, this is, Mr. Councilman, we want to work with you to make sure we get with law because they have to figure out where that would go. Uh, uh, if that actually can fit into this or if we need to do a separate piece of legislation for that. So, uh, Kaylin and Dominic will work with you, uh, between now and Monday. And if we can add it to this bill, we will. And if not, we will have to. But we're going to work with Hillary and the fine folks at the law department to make that happen as well as working with Councilwoman Clark on, on her issues as well.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you all. We are now in recess. We'll see you guys on May the 11th.